Boulder County Commissioners, now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Deborah Belcher, CDBG grant administrator.
Good morning, thank you, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I assume all of you have the report that I submitted? Okay, alright. And something that Michael just passed out to you this morning. You had asked for the income limits for the CDBG program, and so I've provided that for you. It's the highlighted sheet that shows the limits. We had, in this particular program, we had to have three households with very low income, which is called extra-low income on this sheet. And then very low on this sheet is, in CDBD terms, low income. And low income, this is moderate income. So, anyway, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but that's the way it is. So, I've just given you the income limits, just for your informational purposes. Also, I gave you a sheet that shows who has been approved up to this point. And it includes the factors that were part of your ranking system, the income level. You'll see very low, moderate, and low. Mobile home was a priority for you. Leverage, we're not using any leverage in this program. We got the grant modified to change that, leave it out. Nobody had a conflict of interest. You can see who was elderly, who wasn't. Disability, some of the ones that you see earlier in the program, there were fewer elderly and disabled people who had applied, and then later on we've had more, but a lot of those are not feasible for rehabilitation. So, just to give you a little background on that.
Ms. Chairman.
Careful.
Yes, ma'am.
Patton Drive is in East Pointe.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And Maryland Avenue is in Lanark.
Oh, I'm sorry, how did I do that? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to get, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Bring up my name.
Yeah, 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 that, no.
The Maryland Avenue is in Lanark, and then the Patton Drive is in East Pointe.
Okay. The address is Carabelle, though, for the Maryland Avenue, the mailing address.
Yeah, because you said we couldn't do it in Carabelle. That's even why I brought it.
Right, yeah, that's just, but that is her official mailing address. For some reason, that's the post office. But, yes, yes, ma'am, that's the Lanark area. Okay. And then where it says prior, it's like, have they had less than $5,000 in the last five years, or less than $10,000 in the last 10 years of anything like ship, or weatherization, anything like that? That's what that column is for. The answer was yes, these people, in other words, it's not the same people going to the well over and over again, was the idea on that. So, you can just see who's been in the program up to this point. And then today, I'd like to recommend that you approve Donnie and Tammy Nichols, their application. Their home is a, it's a good, solid rehab, mobile home. A lot of the ones that we have left are just not feasible for rehab, but this one is a very good candidate for that one. And as far as income is concerned, I think that's going to be dipping a little bit. She has, I don't know if you know her medical condition, so.
Same move. Second. We have motion in full by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any comment? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And just for your information, I'm going out with the building official this, today to look at one that I'm really struggling with as to, I mean, if I had my druthers, I'd say, let's tear it down and start over, but we don't have that option. Elderly, two elderly, one disabled of the couple, that I would like to be able to assist if we can. It's in the Appalachia Cola area, outside city limits. But I'm going to see if that one can work. If not, we'll go a little farther down the list. But we've got one more to choose.
Got one more?
Yes, and that will make our 10th one. And that, the one that I'm looking at today will be, is the one that, as far as your priority system, they meet all the boxes. And I really think that's like a deserving couple that you would like to assist, and, but it's just a feasibility question that I'm trying to make sure of before we get too far into it.
Uh-oh.
Alright.
Any comments on the board?
Yeah, this on the last year approval?
Yes, sir. This is, this will, the, I'll go ahead and send the Nichols one out to bid, and then whatever we have left is how much we have to spend on this last one.
Okay, now, did you get money for next year?
No, sir. We cannot apply until this grant's closed out, plus they haven't had the cycle for next year yet.
Okay, Claire, I think you're thinking about the ship. This is not ship money.
Right.
This is CDBG money, that company.
This is CDBG.
So, we, hopefully, we'll get ship money in every year, but that doesn't, that's a different program.
I knew, I knew about ship money. I thought, no, I thought it was a recycle like ship.
Yeah, no, we have to close this one out and then reapply, and I think it's, that's every other year at best.
Um, yeah, they will have another cycle. I don't know when, because they're doing some rule changes again. But I need to go ahead and move on this next one, and so we can get closed out.
Okay. I guess my question would be, will you be closed out to apply for the next cycle?
That is the plan, yes. I, I've got to make sure we don't have a long environmental on this last one, and I think we'll be okay on that. But the Nichols, we already had the environmental clearance, we're ready to go, so.
And the last one, I think, there's very, very little money left, so she's trying to find one that she can do for, just a little bit of money that's left, or she can close this thing out, is the way I understand it.
Yes, sir. And then there are several of them that I really wish we could have helped, and those will be some good candidates, if, if, we don't know if. But if we get funded again in the next cycle, and it, assuming you choose housing, then we would be able to bring those as potential, you know.
Candidate.
Mobile home replacements, if you will. You might want to say, we're not doing any in the Exposure D area, but, because it costs so much, but that'd be a decision for the next round.
Well, I have a question. You're saying some of them still apply. I guess, will they have to reapply, or their application will go?
Well, I am keeping the list of all the names of people who have, who have inquired. I don't actually have a formal application from some, some of them, but I've told them, like, I've looked, well, some of them, I've had to say, you're outside the, you're in the city limits, you know, sorry, and whatever. And I do refer, Laurie Switzer and I refer back and forth with each other. And there are some that I know are not feasible. And so, what would happen is, if we get another CDBG grant, I will go back through that list, and of course, we will again advertise for anybody who wants to come in new. And then we'll go back through our priority system and balance the money and the income levels, and all of those kind of things again, and bring cases to you as they appear.
One other group, yeah, but what I contacted is a client that Commissioner Lockley and I are working on, is, can you bring USDA into the loop? Because they work on, on mobile homes. They have, no, their programs aren't always on grants.
Yeah, their loans typically.
Yeah, and they depend on funding also, but maybe as a third choice, if.
Yeah, if anybody, and those are pretty much, the owner applies directly.
Yeah.
To USDA. There's, there's nothing that prevents anybody from doing that, as far as, you know, the CDBG is concerned.
Yeah, and we could take that into account, Commissioners, because I know you kind of want to tweak, if we get funding for another round. I know you guys have discussed tweaking some of the rules and regs that we have now. So, we can take USDA into consideration for certain people.
And they need, they need to have the ability to apply.
Yes.
They're going to need help behind a lot of people.
That's the key, yeah, getting help.
Yeah, the, like, like you mentioned, a lot of that is, is loan money, and a lot of people just don't have, they don't have two nickels to rub together to, to pay a loan.
Right.
And sometimes, if they've got hybrid programs, you know.
Yeah.
Loan-grant programs, different things, but I think if more people that inquire there, then USDA would go back into the practice of sending someone down here maybe once a month that could meet, remember, they used to do that, and then they stopped when they kind of downsized. But I think if we get more people inquiring into their programs, then they'll start to send another rep down here again to start checking on that.
Okay.
But pardon, pardon me, I'd just like to say, you know, when the people say loan or grant, it come, it be combined like that, but they don't have the money to pay back, so you don't have no better plan, and that, that one ain't getting nobody doing it.
Now, I do, there, I did see the records of one person who had successfully used USDA. In fact, she was one of the ones that I had approved, and you had approved, but she withdrew because of her health. But she had a USDA loan, and it was, I want to say, like, $20 a month. It was, it was just tiny. But on the other hand, they didn't do a whole lot either, so, you know.
We did vote on her request, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, I thought we did. Any other questions from the board, Ms. Deborah, while she's here? Thank you for coming in today.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year.
Uh-huh. Madam Clerk, you said you didn't have a report?
I don't, thank you.
Next would be Mr. Michael Moro, County Coordinator, report.
I think you heard us all morning, Happy New Year, Commissioners. Item number one, inform the board that Ms. Whitney Barfield and I met with Jim Oskowitz from DEP, Ms. Tiffany Castressoni, I think it is, from The Architect, and Mr. Alan Flohr from Anderson Construction, for a pre-construction meeting for the Lombardi's Park Improvement, $509,000 natural resource, NERTA-funded project. At this meeting, it was stated that a notice to proceed will be issued, and mobilization should start on January 26. The chairman, Ms. Barfield, and I will review items such as access to the park, boat ramp and bathrooms during the project, and these comments and concerns will be forwarded to the contractor as he finalizes the project timeline. Ms. Barfield will attend the monthly update meetings, which will be held on the last Friday of every month. And the reason we got to discuss access is because they're going to be tearing down that mental building, and when they're doing that for liability purposes, they want to close the ramp. So, he wants to know, you know, about advertising for it. Other times, he would like to close the ramp, but he'll defer to whatever the board, the county wants done, you know, to get access to Lombardi.
Real quick on this issue, Mike, as Alan was talking this morning about this BP-funded stuff, this project for Lombardi's was funded because Lombardi's Landing, or the park that was closed, where we had all the boom stored in there, and that boom had to be secured. So, this was a project put forward because one of the things BP had to cover was the loss of human use by the public to this public boat ramp, the restroom, and all that. The park was closed, the public could not use it. So, BP was obligated to, to make some funds available for the human use, the human loss of use, because public could not use the park. So, that's how this part, particular project, became funded. Alan was stating earlier that these were projects that were just picked out by BP and the state, and early, NERTA, early restoration, but that's actually how it was, this project was picked, because the public could not use this boat ramp and the park for four or five months. So, that's kind of how this project got started.
And actually, that, you're exactly right, Commissioner. I was being a little vague by accident, because you, you remember, you freshen my memory now, exactly right. The projects we got in Franklin are all human use. So, the St. George Island projects, we didn't need to expand the boat ramp there, but we needed a bathroom. So, that's how those got selected. East Pointe, same deal. The problem was, there wasn't any human use on the eastern end, because they didn't have any, they wouldn't store any boom down there. They didn't use the East Pointe channel. So, there were things that they said, we will, we'll help you in areas where we were using it. And that's how we got into, but you're like, it was.
Well, East Pointe fishing pier, you know, we had boom down through, you couldn't fish off of it no more, but they hooked the boom and all this kind of stuff. So, the public also couldn't use those fishing piers. So, that's kind of how those two restroom projects got funded, and it was human, a loss of human use, is how that moved forward. But I'm glad to see we are moving forward on this project.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, it's $800,000 that had, we had a choice, you know, maybe in hindsight, we might have said, well, let's do the East Pointe channel, but we didn't have a choice.
Right. It had, these funds had to be used in different areas of the county where people were not able to use public facilities.
Can I, wait.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you said they're going, they're going to do this. Okay. They're going to close it. But, now, you think they're going to do this during August or December?
Well, I'm not sure much.
Well, it says it starts January 26.
Yeah.
This month.
I know they let them put over, but that's what.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
That's why I'm going to sit down and talk with the chairman, talk with each of you, honestly, as if you have any input with it, as to when they, it's when they have to close, when they would like to close, and, you know, at some point, does the county just want to close? Ah, we don't want to close, but we'll try and work out a schedule to make sure it's closed, and then we'll do the advertising. So, to answer your question, Commissioner, I will check with you as to, you know, what their timeline is, when they say they have to close it for demolition purposes, and then the other times, you tell me, you know, what we want. We'll forward it back to the contractor.
I guess.
But it'll be advertised.
Yeah, because they, they don't, I mean, they don't work on this thing, but they put over on this thing, and knowing their votes, we help them. So, we need to try to get together.
Commendate them as best we can.
I will, we will, we will. Just, the times we can't help is, like I said, when there's, when they're doing demolition, there's no.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be time.
We advertise where ahead of time, so everyone is aware that it'll be closed for two days or whatever.
There's going to be time, we just can't help it, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But we try to work with them best, as far as we'd like to tell them to say.
Yes, we will. No more comments. Item number two, inform the board that I received the bid tabulations, which was included in your package, for the East Pointe Fishing Pier Improvement, NERTA-funded project. There were four vendors that submitted bids, and North Florida Construction out of Clarksville was the lowest bidder at a base bid of $259,000. Based on the information received from the, from DEP, North Florida Construction is anticipated award of this project. As I stated at a previous meeting, even though this is over the $241, $844.35 project budgeted amount, the state will seek supplemental funding. The state's going to get that funding, they pretty much told me that, so.
Mike, one thing on this right here, now, I think at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, you were talking about they were having, who owns certain property and all, did they get that worked out?
No, that's on, that's on the St. George Island side of it, that's where that fight is.
Okay, this is on the East Pointe, is that?
Yes.
Okay. One of them's called the East Pointe Fishing Pier, and the other one's called the Long Island Fishing Pier. Okay.
Because that one was tied into the sea wall and something else we were going to do, so that was a bigger project.
Okay.
But, yeah, we have, yeah, that's the one we wrote the letter about, about them getting there.
When is this one supposed to start, do you know?
Not yet, but soon. As soon as I know, I'll update the board. Hopefully, I should know by the next meeting, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Item number three, your FAC president and Charlotte County Commissioner, Mr. Christopher Constance, if my pronunciation is not correctly, has asked that all Florida commissioners, administrators, and lobbyists consider making protection of the Sodowsky State and Local Housing Trust Fund a priority as we finalize our legislative action plans in preparation for the 2018 legislative session. Since 1992, the Sodowsky State and Local Housing Trust Fund has been a dedicated revenue source for affordable housing. The board is aware, the county receives $350,000 annually from these funds, which is used to assist residents with repairing and renovating their homes, and also assist new home buyers with down payment assistance. However, in recent years, the legislature has consistently swept money from these trust funds. Last year, a resolution adopted by FAC members was included in the Legislative Affordable Housing Work Group final report to the legislature, and bipartisan legislation was filed in both the House and the Senate to prohibit future sweeps of the Housing Trust Fund. The Commissioner is asking for the board to remind our state legislative delegation of the importance of these funds. More discussion. I mean, we all know how important these funds are, we know they've been, they've been just taking the money, but there's a, there's a push to keep this money in there for affordable housing only.
I agree with that.
And so, I.
I make a motion that we send our legislative delegation a letter supporting the State and Local Housing Trust Fund, and ask them to keep it as high as what they can, and everything that comes, and just give them a little brief description of how the funds help Franklin County, and so they will understand.
Okay.
And I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion in full by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? As I said, I support that. It didn't just start happening last year, it's been happening for a number of years.
Almost 10 years now it kept.
Millions and millions of dollars each year they take out and use for other purposes to offset the state budget.
You heard this morning, housing is a problem. You're both from the both departments, Ms. Moore and then Ms. Belcher, you know, it's a problem.
It is. Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, question if I can. Are these ship funds, is that what we're talking about?
Exactly. For us, it's ship, but, yeah.
You had a comment, Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I, they said, and, that's what I was going to say too, what he said, the ship fund, and then the down payment assistance. Well, that, that helped the people a lot.
If they, if they quit sweeping it, we might even get more than what we're going to get.
Sweep 50, yeah, the rate of minimum, yeah. Yes, sir.
So, always a possibility.
And as we all know, when you're young and married and all that, it's hard to, it's hard to get those kind of monies out to, to get a down payment on a house. And this helps, I know several families in this county that this has helped on the first time, down payment. I mean, I mean, they can't have anything against them, they can't have any kind of like a foreclosure or bankruptcy or anything else against them, either one of them, the husband or the wife, but this sure does help them when they come together and need to get their home.
Like Commissioners, I'd also ask, when you go up for legislative date, please, you know, as you hit your.
Yeah.
You tell them right then and there to, look, you know, really, keep your hands out of cookie jar.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
Item number four, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the Department of Air Force 25-year lease between the county and Tyndall Air Force Base. The board approved this lease based on requests from your attorney at your November 7 regular meetings. Attorney Shuler has reviewed the final draft.
Pleasure to board.
Clarification, this is the land out there, the airport that we have leased out to Tyndall for years.
For years.
Years for, since the 40s or 50s or something like that. Okay.
We'll move. We have a motion in full by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
Item number five, Commissioners, including your packages, the annual Wilderness Coast year-end report. This report includes fiscal year '16, '17 annual statistics, the annual plan of service, and fiscal year '17, '18 budget for all libraries within the Wilderness Coast Public Libraries Cooperative. No board action is necessary, as this is an information item that will be given to the clerk for the board record. And if you don't mind, I have two more items that I want to bring up. One, at the last meeting, I asked the board to allow the county attorney to assist the supervisor of election in a, in a, an item where previous supervisor of election had overpaid herself. I need to be very clear, the county did not overpay that previous supervisor of election. Each constitutional officer run their own payroll, and they pay themselves. That, that supervisor of election overpaid herself. And the reason I, I thought it was a good idea to ask the board to allow the county attorney to assist her with, with trying to get this money back, is because if not, then, the current one was pretty, is pretty frustrated with the situation, she's tried and tried, and then she had to go out and seek, get legal counsel to assist her. And rather than doing that, I thought it was a better idea just to use the county attorney. And in addition to that, when the auditor does the audit, if we can't show where we've tried, or we've actually gotten this money back, then as part of the county's audit, we get written up. I don't know if that's the right term, the clerk could probably correct me, they cite us or they write us up. I'm not sure what the term that they use, but to me, that's a reflection on the entire county. So, I just thought it was a good idea to get the kind of county attorneys to assist with this matter. But the board is, was getting criticism, and I've been questioning, why did you guys overpay her, you know, you know, why is the supervisor of election, why is she responsible? That's just, that's what it is. That's, that's how it works. It's not the board's responsibility. I was basically asking you guys to do supervisor of election a favor by assisting her with this situation. And, and the board, the county did not overpay the constitutional office, she overpaid herself. So, I just need to clear that up for the record, so that in case of any further questions, please, you can direct them to me, let me.
Oh, Michael, really, really, truly. Supervisor of office now is kind of short-funded, and I don't think hiring legal counsel is also in our budget.
Probably not.
Which would, she'd have to come back to the county board and ask for money to help her hire a legal counsel. So, I agree with you, best thing for us to do is use the county attorney to try to resolve that issue. And the current supervisor of election did not cause the issue, she's now tasked with trying to solve the issue. So, I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay.
I'm glad you brought it out, that the board or the finance department did not overpay her.
Yes, I saw it, which I was.
Something that was on her watch and came out loud.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Shuler, is the problem being rectified?
Commissioner Sanders, I have been in communication with the current supervisor of elections, and I am scheduled to get in contact with her this afternoon to get an update on the status, so it is being looked into. I certainly have not finished my due diligence at this point, I'm not ready to proceed forward, but I am gathering information, staying on top of the situation.
Let's rectify the problem.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I got. I don't have a lot of coming back on the board or on this call.
Yes, ma'am. And the next item is, just, just forewarning, dear, we just added something to it. The agenda for the next meeting, it's very, very long, Commissioners, I'm telling you right now. We have two public hearings on there, I might be repeating myself, that will take up a lot of your time, especially one of those, and I guess I could state what it is. Yes, sir. The St. George Island Business Overlay Project, Overlay District, sorry, that's on there, and.
Has that been looked at by the P and Z board?
It will, next Tuesday, away from today.
Okay.
Yes, and so, their comments will be coming back, yes. So, I'm just giving you a heads up. I have, till about 1:00 on there, honestly, Commissioners, it's probably till 1:32 is what we're looking at realistically. I don't know if you want me to go ahead and build in where we break for lunch and then come back and meet, that's up to the board. I could just leave it straight, and then we make a decision at meeting time what we're going to do. That's up to the board.
Trying to let pound cake and cover.
I think they say I'm pounding ground cake.
But I'm just, I just want you guys to be prepared, okay? I just, you know, I hate for you guys to see it, you know, the Thursday or the Friday, and see this and say, okay, Michael, what's going on? And that's it for my report, Commissioners.
Man, we don't worry, but that's what we do.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But still, you know, our average is 11, 12, not 1, not 2. So, I just, I mean.
You're making up for it today, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah. Oh, okay, I could say that. All right, Commissioners, that's, that's it for me.
Any comments from the board, Mr. Moro? Next on the agenda would be Michael Shuler, County Attorney, report.
Don't have any action items for the board, but I did want for the record to state that I have received and recorded the quitclaim deed from Capital City Bank to Franklin County or South Show Court, that is plot seven, which is south of the road, and we have now concluded that settlement with Capital City Bank, and they have filed a dismissal of the lawsuit. So, that, that litigation is resolved.
Right.
Yes. Yes. I'm handing that. No, just for the record, the deed is recorded in official record book 1208 at page 456. It was recorded on December 22nd, 2017. And also, now that item, just information, the Chairman has mentioned the opioid litigation, opioid crisis. I will be coming back to the board at the next board meeting for you to consider joining in some litigation, so we can recapture some of the cost to the public from the opioid litigation, opioid crisis. So just be prepared, I have something else that we'll be dealing with at the next meeting.
All right. Any comments from the boards at the time?
Just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we proceeding ahead with CHC contract, or are we getting bogged down again?
I would say we're still discussing whether we contract. I've sent a communication out that I will be calling each one of the Commissioners this week individually to bring you up to speed in terms of exactly where we are, where the sticking points are, and where we've actually made progress, so.
I did make, sorry, I did make contact with Mr. Coleman last week. Their offices were closed. He was off in admin, so he will be giving me a call this week with an update, and I'll pass that along to the board and to the county attorney also.
Any other comments for the county attorney?
Yeah. Well, I seen an email when you said the other hospital, did anybody talk with you?
I, actually, I've spoken with their attorney several times. I, in fact, had Mr. Moro sit down on a phone conference between myself and Ms. Michelle Jordan, who's the attorney for the hospital district. So yes, I have been in communication with them.
I'm talking about.
Oh, you're referring to, yes.
The, oh, what that hospital name? I mean, Telaz, I ain't talking about Telazamor.
Capital Region.
Capital Region.
Right. I have not spoken to them since I sent you the email, because I don't really have any direction from the board at this point, but that is something that I plan on discussing with y'all in the phone conferences that I'll be holding with each of you individually. But they did reach out, want to have some, some communication with the board and that Capital Medical Regional Group.
I don't see nothing wrong with talking.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to talk to.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you clarify for me, just because I don't have probably one or two more minutes. I can actually comment if I knew at this and don't know what I'm doing. I realize my time is short.
I know it's over.
So we did, in order for our turn to be able to talk to them, do we need to make a motion and vote on it? Is that correct?
Well, you need to rect, you need to rect your stand.
I said it, that motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. The attorney is to talk to Capital Regional Medical Center. Any further comments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
And just for clarification from the board to myself, I would be involving Mr. Moro in those communications as well.
Absolutely. All right. Any other comments for the county attorney? We're down to the Commissioner's comments.
I got one. Oh, before, I didn't make it to the last meeting, but before that, we made a motion, and I'm not asking nobody to take their motion back or nothing. But during the motion, the people who were involved, they weren't there. And I don't know about the counterfeiting that we made a decision about they not being heard. So, what would it be? I think, I think if they wanted to talk, they should be able to talk. So I'm gonna make a motion that we let the people come back and talk. I'm not asking you to take back a motion. All I'm doing is asking you to put them on the agenda and let them be heard.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Can we be specific and say that one of the meetings, whoever it is that can come in, we can, can it be at the February, one of the meetings in February, if you don't mind, to put that in the motion? Is that okay, Commissioner?
Oh.
Because, like I said, the next meeting, you're already here until, like, the next meeting is on the 16th, and you're already here until.
Okay, whatever, yeah, yeah.
Whoever it is.
The meeting after. It was the night tonight.
It's me.
Oh, okay. So if, I mean, can you guys put that in the motion? I'll get with Mr. Langston, and we could pick a meeting in February that's good for him? Is that okay?
Fine with me.
That's fine with me. We can, if the next agenda is too full, I'd like to get on the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
It's not back on the agenda.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries? Any other Commissioner's comment?
Chairman, can I give a comment for a minute?
Huh?
I want to give a comment for a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was trying not to cough.
Don't cough for us. I don't have to have to.
Just as a way of putting, we live in a community sometimes where we have a lot of negative things going on. And I just want to share some positive things. During the month of December, my dad got really sick. He'd been sick for a while, apparently, and he just tried to stay away from all of us. You know how grandparents and dads do that? "Don't bring the kids around me. I don't feel so well," da, 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 you know. But anyway, he actually had pneumonia. And we took him out here to Williams, because that's the only place we could make him go to. So, you know, he was fine with that, and we were good with that. I just want to share the experience he said he had there. He did wind up having to get transferred to Gulf Coast, because Bay-Sacre Heart didn't have any beds available, because his condition didn't get worse, but it didn't get any better in his three or four days I had it waiting. But anyway, he wanted me, and shared with me, and wanted me to express to the public when I had the chance to, and that's what I'm doing, that the level of care he received at Williams, he was satisfied with. He did not feel like he was slated in any way, or somehow, you know, drawn out just so money could be taken out of Medicare, Medicaid, whatever he's on. But he was happy with the care he received at Williams. I'm gonna share that with the public. We're taking out the black eyes, so here's something that's good and positive. I just want to share that with you.
Any other Commissioner's comments? Meeting adjourned.